Now being slightly after 7:00 PM, we are calling to order the committee of the whole meeting for, is it slightly after 6:00 PM actually? For those of you who didn't catch that, that was a test. Now being slightly after 6:00 PM, the committee of the whole meeting regarding the city budget is called to order. First order business is the roll.
Bartlett.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Doom.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Magaki.
Here.
Mieski, he's not here. Reeves.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Forsma.
You must say it out loud, sir, so we can recognize you. Great. With that, I will turn this meeting over to our finance director, Jaimon Friedel. Thank you very much. It was a pleasure.
You're gonna have to adjourn this thing too.
Well, I think we have to approve some minutes from last time first, so. Whoever wants to do that.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Motion in the second and the discussion.
Motion second and any discussion. Hearing none. Minutes are approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Sounds like the ayes have it. Thank you. Passes.
Wheels are falling off already. Okay. Okay, so I know a couple of you were absent last week, so we'll just kind of give a real brief kind of executive summary of what this budget looks like so far. What the objectives of this meeting are, and then we'll kind of go through the departmental and a couple of different fund budgets as well. The first part, the executive summary, I'm gonna kind of get through a little quickly, but stop me if you have any questions, if you don't understand something. Goes for the whole meeting. If you have any questions, just go ahead and feel free to interrupt me at any time. I'll go through the department budgets. They're obviously here for questions and everything. We have a lot to get through tonight, so we'll kind of try to speed through things as much as possible. But doesn't mean that we won't have time for questions and conversation and whatever, so. Okay, with that, everybody has paper copies. I felt terrible printing this much out, but we never know with this screen, and it's kind of hard to see anyway, so I thought this might be easier. Budget information's pretty important, so it's nice to have paper in front of you as well. So, last budget meeting on October 3rd, obviously we went through the overview, went through Opera House, HR, Risk Management, Public Works, IT, Library, the mayor's budget, and then Finance, and a couple of other general department budgets. Tonight, we are walking through the Senior Center, Clerk, Police, Fire, EMS, Recreation, Planning, Stormwater, and Utilities. So, pretty busy night tonight. And then October 24th, we'll just kind of go through review, the review of the proposed changes that come out of this meeting, or in the interim with discussions with leadership. And then we'll finalize the 2020 operating budget to be presented at the November 12th meeting. Okay, some driving factors and just a little bit of outstanding information at this point in time. We're proposing a 2% wage increase for non-union employees. 3% wage increase, wage increase for union employees. Not ideal, but that's the situation we're in right now. No increase in premium costs for health insurance, and our net new construction was 1.48% this year, which results in about $107,000 increase to our base tax levy. Couple outstanding items just relate to kind of EMS and fire township billing and contracts. The draft information is out. We've had a couple trickling comments come in, nothing material at this point, so we'll be bringing the EMS contracts to Finance and Council. Hopefully, first meeting in November. But as of right now, I don't see any issues with any of these outstanding items at this point. The next page is just a real quick overview of what we'll call a condensed income statement. Again, this is just the general fund operating budget at this point in time. The column to the right right now is the 2020 mayor's proposed budget at this point in time. You can see our bottom line right now is showing a surplus of around, can't read that, around $51,399. The column on the left there is what the net deficit would actually be if we were able to accommodate staffing requests at this point in time. This does not take into consideration any rightsizing or anything like this. This is strictly staffing requests at this point in terms of the department requested budget. As we go through the different departmental budgets, we'll touch on the individual staffing requests for each department, and we can have the conversation then. So, any questions on the condensed income statement and kind of where we're sitting right now? Yes?
Just wondering if you could give a quick overview of whose union, who's not?
Well, union is just the sworn officers. It, well, it's not, yeah, it's the sworn office, yes.
Okay.
So, that's it. Okay, just a couple of real quick pie charts. We'll go through them pretty quickly, but this just breaks down kind of easier look at what our revenues are made up of. You can see 73% of that is taxes, which makes up the majority of our revenues. Obviously, expenditures, you can see wages and benefits make up 49%. This includes all of our transfers, in terms of operating transfers and debt service transfer. If you pull out kind of those transfer amounts, which is just the general fund moving money to the debt service fund, or to equipment replacement, or capital, or something like that. If you back those out and run this ratio, our wages are actually right around 70% of the entire operating budget, so. A big part of it. The next page, I think we've seen this before with the CIP, but this is a high-level guess at what we think is going to happen to our mill rate at this point in time. That's the line highlighted in green there. Just a note here, this is based on equalized value, not assessed value at this point in time, but it's the only information we have right now. They're starting to get that data out. We just weren't on the first round of information that was sent out by the DOR, so. Hopefully, we have that before the October 24th meeting, and keep our fingers crossed. Otherwise, we'll definitely have it for the November 12th meeting. But right now, we're anticipating a reduction in the overall mill rate at this point. Okay, this one, I'm not gonna spend too much time on, but we met as leadership last week, and I kind of summarized how the budgets work in terms of two key things that we look at. The top section here is looking at what's called the Expenditure Restraint Program, so not only are we limited, limited from a revenue standpoint, we're limited from how much we can increase our budget every single year as well. So, this year, you can see as we work our way down, the long and the short of it is, is we have additional room in our budget right now of about $97,000 that we could increase our budgets by. But if you work your way down, as of right now, our surplus is at about $28,000. And that takes into account potential adjustments for about $22,500, so that's kind of what we're looking at in terms of staffing increases or rightsizing or whatever. So, keep that number in the back of your mind in terms of what options we have, what the requests are, what's needed by the city, and how much room we actually have to play with right now, and that's that $22,500 right now. Yes?
That's different than the 50, what is it, the 58, 51?
If you take the 51 and you back out that 22.5, that's where we'll end up.
So, it's not, we have 51 and 22, we only have 28, that's it?
If we incorporate this $22,500 into the budget, that would leave our net surplus at about the $28,900 mark, which is kind of that room for error in the budget. And you can see that represents .21% of our overall budget if we leave our surplus at that. So, if you take the 51 on the first page, back out the $22,500 that we have to play with, in my estimation, that's how we end up at the $28,900.
So, we actually only have 28, is what you're saying?
If we incorporate this into the budget, yes. Which is, I think past budgets, you've seen numbers around this, sometimes less. Last year, I think we budgeted a $374 surplus, so. Not a lot of room to work with, and like I mentioned, it's .21% of our overall budget at this point in time, so. Any other questions on this one? Okay. The next slide is just kind of a reference page in terms of how the net new construction impacts our allowable levy and our expenditure restraint. You can see that if for every .5% decrease in that new construction, our levy would go down by about $3,700, and the expenditure restraint would be reduced by about $3,100. This is only taken into consideration for the ERP purposes. It's only taken into consideration changes in the allowable lever, in the net new construction. The Consumer Price Index actually falls into the ERP calculation as well, too, so we're kind of at the mercy of what that number's gonna be right now. We don't know that final number. Right now, we're estimating what the expenditure restraint is gonna be allowed to be. We think we're pretty close, but we'll find out in the next couple of days in terms of what it actually is. Yes?
Just tell us what an ERP is?
Expenditure restraint program. Okay, just some visual aids for you here to kind of show past history in terms of 17, 18 actual, and then 19 and 20 budgets, in terms of what our taxes have been, intergovernmental revenues, public charges, and then other sources of revenue. Again, this kind of paints the picture that we're pretty heavily dependent on taxes at this point in time, but you've seen that steadily increasing. Yes?
And who, just one question about the expenditure restraint program. How's that determined?
It is a fun little calculation. So, we get our net new construction. In this case, this year is 1.48%. We're allowed to take 60% of that, and then we're allowed to add on the Consumer Price Index change through September of every year, so it's the 12-month change through September. We don't have that information yet. Should be coming in soon. So, you add those two numbers together. You take last year's budget, and you multiply that by that percentage, and that's how you end up at what your overall budget can be.
And who sets that?
The Department of Revenue will send that. So, we know one part of it. We don't know for sure the consumer price piece of it yet. They sent out some estimates, so this is pretty close to what we think it's gonna be. It could go up or down a little bit.
Just one final question. When will we know that?
Hopefully, within the next couple of days. It's, yeah, they have to wait till the end of September to get it, and then they're, they have to rely on the federal, can't remember which office it is, but they'll send that out soon. Okay, this is a high-level picture of what our operating expense summary looks like, so this would include wages, benefits, kind of the day-to-day direct costs, which we'll call operation and maintenance costs from here on out. You can see we're going from 16 through 18 actual. We have our 19 budget. The second to the left column is the proposed budget right now that we have, and then the far-right column would be if we put all the staffing requests on top of that. This is kind of interesting to me because it's almost like we're a year behind in this case in terms of what that trend line is doing, so. Kind of interesting. The next two pages, we're not gonna spend any time on right now. You can go back and reference this, but again, it's just a summary of the departmental budgets within the general fund. This graph here shows the operation and maintenance, or you'll hear me say O and M a couple of times tonight. Again, this is just the direct costs, the day-to-day purchases that the departments are making. So, we have the, we're showing the 2016, 17, and 18 actual increases, and then what we budgeted for 19 and 20. So, you can see the 20 number of 1.93%. That's down from past years mainly due to some changes we made in the budget methodology this year. One of them would be creating a refuse fund. We changed some methodologies in terms of how we treat the EMS funds and things like that, EMS admin fees and things like that, so we could get a little bit more room within the expenditure restraint. So, that 1.93% looks great. Probably not gonna be the case next year. We'll probably be back up around these higher averages next year when we budget again, because we kind of had some one-time fixes this year. Does that make sense? All right, the next slide is just the general fund wage summary. Not a whole lot to see here, but you can see right now we're budgeting right around $5 million in just wages. For analysis purposes, I pull out non-overtime wages, so we're down around the $4.8 million mark for 2020 proposed wages at this point. The next page is the staffing requests, and you can see I threw a couple of options in there, too, that we got from a couple of members of leadership this week. We don't need to spend any time on this right now, because we'll go through this as we work down the departmental budgets, but again, this is something to keep in the back of mind in terms of what's being requested, and then the department heads will touch on their individual staffing requests tonight. Again, sticking with wages, you can see where we've been, 16, 17, 18 actual increases. The 19 budgeted increase, the 2020 budget is right around 3%, 3.04% to be precise, and if you threw in the staffing requests, we'd be up an additional 10.48% at that point in time. So, any questions on that? The bottom graph here just kind of shows budget to actual to give you an idea of what things have looked like in the past, and this is actual 15 through 18. This is benefits, so this would be FICA, WRS, life insurance, things like that. You can see where we've been, 16, 17, 18, the 19 budget increase, and then the 20 budget increase. This one kind of ebbs and flows depending on what they do with the WRS percentage every year, and they did increase it this year. Again, this is budget to actual. You can see where we've been, kind of give you an idea of how budgeting sometimes works and doesn't work. It's, you know, we do the best with the information we have at a certain point in time, and then things change throughout the year, so. Just wanted to give you some perspective in terms of how things shake out at the end. Yes?
On that one, it looks like in 2018, we budgeted more than we spent, so do we have money left over to be put into this budget?
Well, that would be, so that all rolls into the general fund summary, but if, as we work our way through here, so if we look at like Health and Dental, the next slide, which is up right now, is kind of same thing for 18. But if we look at where we were in wages, we were over, so it's kind of all these overs and unders, and we take that into consideration, so. Health and Dental, you can see we're proposing $1,015,000 this year. Overall increase of about 3%. Again, there was no actual increase in the premium cost, but as people shift structures or tiers within our plans and go from maybe single to family or whatever it may be, we see a pretty big jump. It's a pretty big gap when somebody jumps from one tier to the next, so that's why we're seeing a slight increase this year. Again, budget to actual for Health and Dental. And the departmental budgets, I guess, unless anybody has any specific questions on where we're at, kind of on the overall budget summary, executive summary, and kind of what the goals are for tonight.
Just a quick one, Jaimon, thank you. When we have a net over our budget, when the actual is net over, do we fund that difference with borrowing? Is that question not relevant, or?
If we're...
Some of the audience says no, so. I'm kidding.
So, if we run a deficit in any given year?
Yeah.
Well, we have, we have an accumulated fund balance, or in the real business world, retained earnings or savings account, whatever you want to call it. So, that's ongoing. It goes up and down depending on annual surplus and deficit. So, no, we don't fund it through borrowing because we have a big enough window there. We have a fund balance policy where we set that between 20 and 25% of our budgeted expenditures, so we kind of try to stay within that window.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Sid.
2020 general fund wage summary. I know we'll get to it, but.
Sid, microphone. Microphone, please.
The 2020 general fund wage summary. Have we, as a council, voted on any of these wage?
The additional staffing requests?
Yes.
No, nope. We just presented a few of them last week, so last week, we would have touched on the library positions. And WSTO, and then the parks position, so that's all we touched on last week.
I'm looking at the first item, which is law enforcement. You know, we've talked about that this a number of times in the last couple of years, so does that go back to the discussions we've had about that?
We, so Chief will be presenting his budget tonight, so we'll touch on that when we get to Law Enforcement Department.
Okay.
And again, no decisions have to be made tonight. We can ultimately make those on the 24th. Again, we just wanted the information in front of you, so you can continue to go back and look at it and reconsider and what have you, so. Any other questions before we dig into the?
Yeah, the expenditure restraint program, you said that $22,500. Since we're budgeting for contingencies differently this year, would that also be the amount we have available for contingencies?
So, the contingency, we always backed out of the expenditure restraint calculation anyway. Again, the reason we're not budgeting for it this year is because it always opens the door to get the question of, well, why aren't you including this in the formula? Because it's in our overall budget at $80,000, but when we actually submit our information to the DOR, we do a spreadsheet and we pull that out. So, it's all coming from the same place. It's coming from the fund balance, or anticipated to be coming from the fund balance when we spend against the contingency. So, in terms of, you can either budget for it and have a line item, or you can just set a limit to say we're going to approve up to $80,000 in contingent expenses every year. Does that make sense?
Any other questions before we move on? Okay. Presentation of the executive budget?
All right. To the page here. So, up first is Senior Center, and again, similar to last week, we will, oh, my copy.
Thank you.
I'll touch on kind of the high, the numbers that went up or down by a fair amount in terms of dollars and percent. We'll go through these, and then we'll let you ask questions of the department heads as they're up here. So, as we work through the Senior Center, top-down, it kind of goes through salaries, benefits, and then the kind of day-to-day direct operation and maintenance costs. So, the first number that pops out there is the wages. You can see a $14,000 increase or approximately 10%. Again, this is mainly due to the volunteer program coordinator position and the way the grant dollars dropped off a little bit this year. Employee benefits was the same reason, so we anticipated those to increase this year. Health insurance, you can see, went up as well, approximately 25%. Again, this was due to that position. The next big change, the kitchen fund at 63%. I didn't have a note on that one. Cindy, do you have any?
So, the change in, in that is us doing, cooking our own meals on Thursdays, and so we get reimbursed from the county for doing that. And so, part of that, that is, the kitchen fund is an in-and-out. So, whatever we get, we, for donations from people drinking coffee in the morning or eating a treat, that money goes into buying more coffee and buying food that gets used for, such as our benefit that's coming up next Tuesday. I'm gonna plug that real quick. So, we have our benefit coming up on Tuesday, next Tuesday, at the Viking Brew Pub, so stop by if you can't. I know you have a meeting, maybe before. Have some nice food. But that's where, that is an in-and-out kind of account. Thing that's left over gets thrown into.
To general fund, yeah, and you won't see the in on this part of it.
No.
Because it's up on top in the revenue section. This is just addressing the expenditure side of things.
Thank you. I just, what time the event?
Six to eight, sorry.
Thank you.
You're gonna have to come a little early.
Thank you.
Sid.
Any accounting for the woodworking shop in this one?
No, they're completely funded on their own. The city puts in no money to the woodworking shop.
Yeah, I just didn't notice this.
Yep, nope.
The last line item that stood out in terms of dollars and percent is the decrease in telephone costs. This will be a reoccurring theme you see as we work through the departmental budgets. We went through and looked at landline charter costs, things like that. John Montgomery had been spending an absurd amount of time trying to spread these out amongst the departments. We said, stop it. We're just gonna reduce the departmental budgets and throw it all into the IT department and eliminate some of that administrative work on his end, so you'll see this throughout. Cell phones, data, things like that, we kept in the individual department budgets to have a little bit of accountability in terms of turning on your Wi-Fi, so. Yes?
Jaimon, I'm looking at that difference between the department budget and the mayor's proposed budget. Let's see, there's a, like, $5,500 difference in the employee benefits, so how is, what are we cutting to, you know, what is the mayor cutting to somebody? Is it just the way that they've signed up that it's a difference?
Nope. So, as we work through these, and I can clarify that, so the department budget is the way we set it up first when the department heads put their information in, and they really plug in the, kind of below the salary, wages, and benefits line item. They plug that in. We start with our initial analysis, so Ryan Weason went in and did some, did the salaries and benefits and everything like that, and then after my review, just so we don't lose, lose that information, we roll it over to the 2020 mayor's proposed budget. And then that's when I make my tweaks. So, where you are seeing variances, it's not that anything got cut, it's just that we rolled the budget over and I, we addressed review comments and changes on the wages, benefits, health insurance piece. Just through the review process, it's not that anything got cut, so. Another item to note, too, in the departmental budgets that you see here, these don't include the individual staffing requests within the numbers. If they are there, we have a separate slide behind them that will talk about that, so. Okay, overall, 12% increase or $62,000. Again, the majority of that has to do with the volunteer program coordinator position. The good news with this one is, a month or so ago, went through council that we approved using potentially fund balance to fund that position. We don't have to do that this year. As you can see in the budget, we have an overall surplus, so. The good news is, it looks like the city can sustain this position long-term, so.
Any other questions on the Senior Center?
This is Galen.
And that is, that was one of the things I had asked about previously as to whether or not we approved any of these, you know, positions, and that was one that we actually backed it on.
Yeah. Yeah, but that was not part of the committee of the whole workshop that went through a separate process.
But it was, but it was one that we're, we were already kind of obligated on that one because we've already made a decision on that.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that's it for the Senior Center, I guess. All right, thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Clerk's up next.
All right, clerk budget. So, we'll touch a little bit on salaries. You can see overall, we're seeing a 4% increase. There was an employment agreement at the time of Holly's promotion, and that kicked in, that will kick in the second piece of this for 2020. The next piece, next big number that jumps out here is the health insurance. You can see a reduction of $19,000 or 51%. Again, this is a shift in benefits elections or health insurance. Again, this is a shift in benefits elections or health insurance. You'll kind of see this throughout, too. You'll see some big increases and some big decreases within the departments. So as people switch tiers, I think Kelly must have been family, and Candy came in, and she's just employee plus spouse. So you see that big difference there. And you can see how much of a swing we end up seeing when people do shift these tiers, and they're hard to budget for because things happen throughout the year. But that's why we're seeing the decrease right now. Telephone costs, again, you can see going down 33 percent. Again, that's the landline and charter cost shifted over to the IT department. Ads and publications, you can see reduced, we reduced that by about 24 percent or $2,600. Again, that was just to put it more in line with what we've been seeing historically and anticipated for 2020. And then the last line I'll point out is the municipal code. You can see we jumped that budget up a little bit, $2,500 or 63 percent. And again, we're just trying to get that more in line with what we've seen historically. So overall, we're actually seeing a 7 percent reduction within the clerk's budget this year. Any questions? Okay, Holly's last one is election.
I have one question for you. On the municipal, is that, is that the IT, you know, the website that we're funding?
Yeah, for the ordinances. Why isn't that under IT, though?
Could be, I think, Holly, you kind of, you keep it up, though, don't you?
I work with UniCode, so anytime that we make an amendment to our ordinances, I send that to them, and then they redraft our ordinances to make those changes. I approve them, and then they get put online that way.
So it's all going through your department?
It goes through me. I think it makes sense to go through me.
Yeah, and it's a whole separate company running this. It's not the city website, it's a...
On our website, but...
Yeah. I'd recommend everybody take the app and put it on your phone or your computer or something because it's really handy to have.
Just curious, what's the turnaround approximately on when we make a change and when it shows up?
So right now, we're on a plan to have them updated every quarter.
Okay.
In the event that we only have, like, one ordinance to update, sometimes they'll ask if we should wait till the next publication, and it makes sense most of the time because then we're not getting charged a significant amount for just one small change.
Okay. Any other questions on the clerk? Clerk, okay. Election, we'll just touch on the overall bottom line, 158 percent increase, $26,000 to be expected in 2020. I think we have, we have four elections next year, plus the general. So we're anticipating these costs to obviously increase. We'll see that drop again in '21, then. Any questions there?
Thank you. Has there been any additional expense incurred to make sure that our, our little local election system is protected from interference or incursion by unwanted parties? Have we needed to do that? I guess, right, Holly? You don't know that, but perhaps you do, Holly?
So in terms of that, all of our computer systems have been updated with the latest Windows, I can't remember what Windows, but we have all the proper equipment. The Elections Commission is mostly taking care of all of that, just making sure that we have the proper equipment. I guess, funding through training and things that I have been to. But all of our machines and everything is taken care of by Dane County and state.
Yeah, I have one more. Thank you. Is it detectable? I know that Dane County is on this, actually. I'm aware of that from going to some meetings at that, at that level. But if something were to happen, and maybe this is beyond your scope, and that's fine, is it detectable or how detectable is it if somebody has made an effort to get into the rolls or made an effort to change votes or whatever the case may be on machines?
I think it would be detectable to get into the state's system. That's, that is an online system that we use. As far as getting in to change the votes, I don't think that's possible in Wisconsin because of the equipment that we use. We use paper ballots. Some states where you're seeing some of that sort of votes got switched and things like that, they don't, they don't use paper ballots. They go to a screen and they make their selections on the screen. So we always have the backup with the paper ballots.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I think, don't they audit them or randomly audit them?
Yes, they do, and I got audited last year, and our machines are very accurate.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Just to, just to comment further on that, the machines, as I understand it, are autonomous. You know, it's like each machine, as it reads those cards, it's not, is not connected to the Internet at that point.
Right. The only thing that, it's plugged into electricity, it's not plugged into any outside source. It's a computer with basically an external hard drive that is. There are many security measures to make sure that nobody is able to remove or replace that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions?
So moving on to law enforcement, you can see by looking at this budget, not a ton of activity this year, kind of sticking within that 2 to 3 percent increase with salaries and wages. The employee benefits is the first number that pops out, the 11 percent. Again, we saw an increase in the WRS benefits this year. Health insurance, down 19,000. We did see some shifts in some elections there, but there's a number of employees here, so some went up, some went down, ended up in a $19,000 overall decrease. Telephone, you can see, dropped about 40 percent or $10,400. Again, this has to do with the landline and charter costs going over to the IT department. Other than that, not many significant shifts here that we saw. Overall, increase in the law enforcement budget is 61,000, 62,000 rounding up, or right around 2 percent. So any specific questions on that one? Not a ton of activity this year, yeah.
The increase in wages, is that because we added a position from last year, or is it just...
The 3 percent?
Yeah, the 3 percent, or is it just the unionized?
That's the union, yep, yep.
Anyone else?
Okay. And the next page is the chief's current staffing request. There is a separate packet within the overall packet tonight, too, that has some documentation in there. But as we work through these, we'll just let Chief kind of touch on these and give you his justification for the requests.
Yeah, we have two requests this year. The first request, of course, is my annual request for another officer position. As we continue to see our case load continue to rise and the availability of officers during shifts, we, again, requesting another officer, understand that there's just not money in the budget for that. But we definitely have a need, and that's only going to increase as we go forward into the next coming years. So instead of maybe one officer request this year, it might be two next year because we're just seeing that steady increase in workload for all of our sworn staff. The other request is a request to increase the hours of the community service officer. Right now, it is at 10:39 hours or 1,039 hours, just short of halftime. We were requesting that to move up to either three quarters or full-time. We utilize the position for our parking enforcement, animal control, and many other functions along with a lot of our community events. We have a lot of activities that that position does currently for us, and we'd like to expand that into others, be a part-time dispatcher, part-time clerical help that we've requested in the past, and just to increase our other types of enforcement that the, the community service officer could do to relieve time for our patrol positions. And those are the only two requests that we had.
There's also the detective promotion.
Oh, yeah, continue. We've been carrying that $3,000 from, since about 2016. Our intent always was to bring back the third detective. We lost the detective in 2016 due to retirement. We did have three. We currently have two. And our desire was always to bring back that third, but the demand for patrol staff has always outweighed our ability to be able to put an officer into that position full-time. So we've, you know, carried the money there in case we ever get to a point where it becomes more necessary for us to have that third investigator position, and we would simply pull somebody from patrol.
The chief, the request here for 48-887 for the COS hours increase, is that for a full-time, then? Is that full-time, up to full-time, or is it the...
Yeah, this would be the difference between current loaded wage, so the hourly wage and benefits, this is the difference to move it to full-time. So this isn't the total cost, this is the difference.
Lisa?
So it's not the total cost because this particular position is not eligible for benefits now, correct?
Correct.
So would it be, benefits on top of it?
No, this is fully loaded.
It is, okay.
Sid, you had one?
Yeah, I just wondered, maybe you can just address this officer, community service officer, why we're going from half-time to full-time?
We would like to increase the hours and expand the duties. Again, we would use the position to supplement our, our part-time dispatching. Right now, that position can't cover any dispatch because they would go over their hours max currently, so we can't even utilize the position there. And also, we have, just, we continue to get inundated with records requests on a daily basis that both our office manager and actually one of the lieutenants is doing currently. We'd like to have that shifted to more to a clerical position, which makes more sense to have those videos pulled, reports pulled and things like that. Also, that, you know, we continue to try to use the position to do animal control. We have roughly about 25 to 30 animal calls each month. We have certified the current CSO in humane certification so that the position is able to do that currently. And we try to do the, all the follow-up with the animal bite, that there's statutes that require us to follow up with the visits and to ensure there's compliance with the animal bite laws that are on the books. Just as a side note from the CSO currently, given the amount of hours that we have, she accounts for about, about $11,000 to $11,000, $11,000 to $12,000 worth of revenue from, from parking loan, which we haven't, as a department, been able to do in the past simply because we didn't have the personnel available to do it. So, you know, part of that revenue is due to the fact that we have the CSO.
You've considered that going from half-time to full-time increases the amount significantly because of benefits?
Yes.
And have you, have you considered maybe having two half-time positions rather than one full?
That's a possibility. We haven't really entertained that. But, yeah, that's definitely a possibility to do two half-times. But what you find is that consistency, and then how do you schedule so that they, whether they go back-to-back? I mean, it, you know, two half-time positions is a little more problematic to, for oversight than it is to have one full-time position, or even one three-quarter time position. We would, you know, definitely benefit from, you know, a three-quarter position as much as, or, and I shouldn't say as much, but it would be helpful to have it as a three-quarter position instead of just a half-time.
And that, so have you considered how much that would make a change in terms of benefits? Would you have to pay?
Well, if you went to two, short of halftime, which is the 1,039 hours, then there would be no benefits involved. City benefits, to my understanding, don't kick in until 1,040 hours and greater, and then it's prorated.
So, and I'm not, I'm not trying to minimize, but the difference, the difference might be significant if it didn't go to a full-time position.
Well, if we went to two positions that were unbenefited, part-time positions equal, it would be about $40,000 total because I think we budget 20,000 or 21,000 for the CSO currently. And so that would go to 42, then annually, if you went two.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the issue of benefits.
Yeah, yeah, the benefits are significant, and it's a significant cost that you have the minute you get over that halftime mark.
And I raise it because, you know, we have discussed that a bit at Personnel already and, and just concern that we, you know, we do, we do things that are both good for the employee but also for the department and also for the city. So it's just, it's just an idea that we've had, that some of us have raised, you know, as to whether or not there should be two in that position rather than one. It's, I think it's kind of a lonely position, actually, in some ways, because that person is kind of on their own, in a way. I know there's supervision, but, you know, it's just an idea about, it's just an idea that's come up.
Jim?
Thank you. Hey, Chief, do we have any idea what the three-quarters, if we were to fund this, the three-quarters, what the differential would be at this time, or is there a way to get that number, or perhaps...
So if we move to full-time, it's the 48-887 here. If we move to three-quarters, it's $31,338 increase. And if you do two half-times, the overall increase would be $23,513.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Just a comment from me, as chair of the public safety, I would, I would lobby for giving the COS officer the full-time benefits. She's well worth it. I don't like the idea of going to a part-time, two part-times, simply because of the consistency or the continuity of the position. I think it's, it's well worth the additional cost to have her as a full-time person. She is, she is just excellent at what she does. So I would, I would encourage the committee to consider that.
Jim?
I would just, I would just add that this position is not a position of high security or whatever. It's, it's, it's a different kind of position than a regular police officer, and I just wanted to point that out to you.
Oh, yes, I know that. I know, she does, she's not a sworn officer, but she is, she does handle a significant amount of paperwork, and she is very, very good at it. So I would, again, I would lobby this, lobby the committee to approve that.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have the fire budget. So again, working our way down, salaries and wages fell in line with where we expected them to be, wages for the volunteers. We did put this more in line with historicals, with the understanding if we end up staffing the volunteer full-time, it's not, like, the council would not recommend additional funding up to the level that we would need for full-time. But we didn't want to continue to kind of chew up budget on the volunteers if we weren't positive we were going to get to the full staffing levels. We'll keep our fingers crossed, and hopefully we get there. In the scheme of things, for the fire department to come up with an additional $6,000, $7,000 throughout the year to fund a full, a fully-staffed volunteer department, I think we could do that. But in terms of budgeting, we wanted to budget realistically. Longevity for volunteers, again, we took a deeper dive into this this year, and based on review of actuals, we reduced that by about 17 percent or $1,500. Employee benefits, again, up 7 percent, but that's just due to the wage and WRS increases that we're seeing. The next kind of bucket of items here, I think it's five lines, we just have, even though they're higher percentages, the dollar amount changes are pretty minimal, working your way down. So the next big number that pops out is the negative 29 percent decrease for buildings and grounds. It went down about $4,000. Again, we just looked at that and put it more in line with what we've been seeing historically. Office supplies, you can see, went up 343 percent or $1,200 at this point in time, when we did see some increases in the printer cartridges, those costs. Again, 343 is high percentage, but $1,200 overall is not that significant of a dollar change. Vehicle fuels, or, I'm sorry, subscription and dues. Scott noted that they changed the firehouse software, so we're going to see an increase there going forward of about 116 percent or $3,300. And then vehicle fuel, we looked at, up 39 percent or $2,300. Again, that was just to put it more in line with what we've been seeing historically and anticipating going forward. So a lot of kind of ups and downs as we dug through this budget this year, but overall, we're seeing a 1 percent increase in the fire budget or about $3,000, about $4,000 overall.
Does longevity on volunteers, does that mean bonuses for being, remaining for a certain number of years?
Yes. Yep.
Jim?
Thank you. I had a question with respect to the staffing request with the fire tech. Could you give me an idea of what, sorry for the ignorance, what does the fire tech do, what's the role of the fire tech?
So the fire tech actually maintains our equipment and doesn't do the oil changes on the fleet, but is... on the fleet, but is responsible for the day-to-day truck and equipment checks, just to make sure that the trucks are all ready to go. The fire technician also does the fire reporting post-incident. Our fire tech currently works four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Usually Monday, we spend our Mondays trying to recover from the weekend because there's nobody there for like two days. We have requirements on us that we're supposed to check the trucks within twenty-four hours of use, you know, so if you have a Saturday incident, it might not get checked until Monday. And then we have that Wednesday, Wednesday thing. So, the reality is, you know, our contact hours on the floor, in order to check equipment, has been cut back over the years. You know, if we go back quite a few years where we had pumper drivers, you know, it's real easy to spend four hours a day on the floor just checking equipment. So, and that was seven days a week, you know, so that's twenty-eight hours all by itself. And then you've got the reporting requirements and, you know, I mean, one report, one hour, we're running between twenty-six and forty-three incidents a month, so you do the math. The forty-hour person that was there in about two thousand twelve got replaced with twelve LTEs, that eventually got replaced with a thirty-hour a week person, and that's why we're actually still where we're at. So our ability to recover from an incident, you know, I mean, we break stuff all the time, batteries need to be checked, meters need to be calibrated. We usually just have to set it on the bench and prioritize until we get time to actually do it, so.
Can I follow? Thank you. Would the fourteen, five, six, two, would that just increase them the hours of the person who's currently?
It would increase ten hours to that position, go from thirty to forty, so.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Jim?
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks.
Okay, EMS. Lisa will come up. CMS has a little bit larger budget in terms of line items, just because it is its own separate fund. So the first section here, you can see where it's kind of blocked off, would be the revenue section, and then following that is the appropriations or expenditures. Again, we'll touch on some of the bigger numbers here. Working down a couple lines, you can see a thirty thousand dollar increase in ambulance fees or five percent. Again, there, we're anticipating a rate change effective on January first, 2020. That has been through Finance Committee at this point in time, is coming to Council next Tuesday, so we have budgeted as if that will pass at this point in time. The SDC or State Department collections, you can see, we reduced that by about twenty-five thousand dollars. This is just collections on bad debt at this point in time. It's just a more conservative approach to budget this way, and because this is a separate fund, we can budget it this way. Last year, I think we had a lot of success collecting in this line item. I think this year, year-to-date, we're only around the two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollar mark, something like that. So again, you can see it's kind of up and down, you never really know what it's going to be, so we chose this year to not budget it. And anything that comes in would kind of be icing on the cake for the EMS department at this point. And then you can see the transfer in from the General Fund, we reduced that by about fifty-five thousand dollars. This decrease is due to reduced funding to the EMS Truck Fund, that's going to be required in 2020. The good news for the EMS is 2020 will be their last debt service payment, so we may be getting to a point where transfers in from the General Fund to the EMS Department will either continue to be this small or zero going forward at this point in time. So, nice work, Lisa. So any questions on the revenue section at this point?
I have a.
Yeah.
What is B A B rebate?
Oh, that's, that has to do with the debt issuance that they have, the Build America Bonds. These, was that two thousand and ten, something like that, it was around the American Recovery Act time-period-ish. And you actually get a rebate on these, these loans, on these bonds. So 2020 will be the last year that we see this line item as well.
Any other questions?
Okay. Working down the expenditure line item, first number that pops out here is the wages part-time. Again, we looked at this and put it more in line with what we've been seeing historically. Again, workers' comp insurance, we reduced that by about fifty-seven hundred dollars of forty-eight percent. Again, just looking historically what we've been seeing, we saw fit to reduce that as well. Telephone, same, same situation, landline and charter costs have gone over to the IT Department at this point in time. Outside services billing, you can see we reduced that by about four thousand dollars or ten percent, again, just to put that more in line with what we've been seeing historically. The next line item that pops out is the rent expense. Again, this is based on the actual agreement with the city. We've calculated that number, so it will be around the thirty thousand dollar mark. Honestly, I think the nineteen number was off a little bit at this point in time, so 2020, that's why we're seeing the reduction. The administration expense, you can see we reduced that to zero. Again, this is one of the methodology changes that we mentioned. Anytime you can knock unnecessary expenditures off of your income statement, it frees up a little bit more room for that expenditure restraint piece of things. So basically, what was happening is historically, the city would give the EMS a certain amount of money in the transfer, and then we'd bill them an admin fee, so we were basically giving them the money upfront and then billing them back for the admin fee, so we're like, well, why are we even doing this at this point in time? Now, we'll change this back eventually as the EMS becomes self-sufficient, we'll get back to the point where, okay, now we can start billing you this, because we're not giving you any more money at this point in time. But for 2020, and to kind of work down that expenditure restraint number, we chose to do it for 2020. Any questions on that? Kind of just a goofy in-and-out thing that we have going on. Vehicle expense, we increased about fifty percent or four thousand dollars, again, just more in line with year-to-date, 2019, and what we're expecting in 2020. Moving on, again, until we get to the bottom lines here, where we're looking at the transfer to debt service, transfer to EMS Truck Fund, and transfer to Equipment Replacement Fund. Obviously, the debt service is based on the repayment schedules themselves, and then Lisa has a forward-looking replacement schedule that she uses for the Truck Fund and the Equipment Replacement Funds. So, overall, we're seeing about eight percent decrease in expenses, or about sixty-three thousand dollars at this point in time. We're anticipating net income of about thirteen thousand dollars for 2020.
So, could you, could you answer this? For the, for the replacement for all the vehicles, I mean, are you on a five-year schedule or ten-year, or what is it?
It's a five-year still. So, the amount that's going to go into the Truck Fund in twenty... Jamin, I think these are flipped. Nope, they're not. There's nothing going in, in 2020. So here's the reason why. We have numerous things that need to be replaced, high-dollar value items. All of our portable radios need to be replaced next year, that's over a hundred thousand dollars. Our mobile units will need to be replaced, there's another eighteen thousand dollars. We have some computers, we have a copier that is barely hanging on, that's ten thousand dollars. We have all these high-ticket items. So in, in order to be able to pay for them, we're putting more into our Equipment Replacement Fund, less into our Truck Fund. We won't need to fund our Truck Fund fully for four more years. By then, we'll be out of our debt service payment and can start really putting big chunks of money into that, but we don't need to worry about that for four more years. But this equipment, this stuff, needs to be replaced next year.
So, so the Truck Fund is every five years, but for right now, you're not in a cycle where you need to replace it?
No. No, we have bigger priorities right now, and that, being relieved of that debt payment is going to be huge.
Anything else, God, Tim?
Can you just talk a little bit about your staffing and your call volume?
Oh, sure. Our staff is sitting at forty-three right now, which is probably one of the higher number of numbers that we've ever had. Our call volume has been really interesting. We went from almost sixteen hundred and eighty calls two years ago, and we dropped like a hundred and seventy last year. So we have a really big discrepancy in our income last year versus the year before, and we're probably going to be right on target for that again this year, right around probably fifteen, twenty-five. So one thousand five hundred and twenty-five responses. Again, I don't have any requests for personnel this year. I don't know if I'll, I don't foresee next year, but again, every time we talk about budgets, I just want to plant it in the back of your minds that the day will come when we're not going to be able to sustain this with volunteers any longer, as everyone gets busier, that's just a reality. So, we are truly blessed in this community. Again, everyone around us, I think I told you this the last time we did this, is hiring, I'm continually sending things to AJ saying, here's what it's looking like out there, we need to start hiring people, this is what it's going to cost us, and it's scary. So, just shout out to all the volunteers, we really have something special here. Is there anything else you wanted to know?
Anyone else?
Okay. Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll work our way through Recreation and then the Youth Center after that. So again, salaries right online at the two percent. Wages, we are seeing about a six percent increase. Again, there was a slight change in the, in the new supervisor wage when we replaced that position this year. Seasonal and temporary, you can see we're increasing by about twelve percent or sixty-three hundred dollars. They're proposing an increase in lifeguard staffing, which will be offset by the increase in the fee revenue at Troll Beach for 2020. Employee benefits, up seven percent. Again, that's going to follow the wage increases and WRS increase overall. Health insurance, you can see, up seventy-five percent or about ninety-six hundred dollars. So we did see some shifts in elections from 2019. Telephone, slight increase, but the dollar amount is minimal at this point in time. Outside services contracts, you can see, we reduced by about nineteen percent or eighty-five hundred dollars. A decrease in enrollment, and some programs resulted in canceled programs, actually. Equipment replacement, maintenance, or equipment maintenance at Troll Beach, down nine percent, but again, the dollar amount is pretty minimal at this point. And miscellaneous expenses are up one hundred and fifty percent or fifteen hundred dollars, and there's new software purchased for field reservations, or will be. So total appropriations are up fifteen thousand dollars or five percent at this point in time, the majority of which relates to wage increases and shifts in beneficial elections. So, any questions for Dan while he's here?
Curious on, curious on the telephone? This one's not rolling to IT?
So, the cellphones and data will still stay with the individual departments, and this was, again, based on an overall review of what those costs have been and what they're anticipating them to be, so.
So they mostly have cellphones?
Yeah, appear so.
Got it.
Yeah.
Sid? Just for Dan, Whitewater Park is coming up, is that going to be under the auspices of Recreation?
The operation of the Whitewater Park?
Yes.
It's, I think it's to be determined. There's two ways they run in other communities, they're contracted out, you can, if you're going to do a rental operation, you could have a contract, a rental operation, or it's a private business, they can run it. Or in Arbor, for example, they run it in Hollis, it's part of the Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay, so that's yet to be determined, then?
Yeah.
And if it was, if it was, if it did fall on the city, there would be, we could, we could expect a fairly significant rise in costs for wages or salaries or benefits?
Well, I think, I think, worst-case scenario I see for a rental operation is that would be a break-even. In Arbor, for example, you know, they stepped it up, they started at six hundred thousand dollars of profit their first year, they created the Enterprise Fund, and now they're, well, I have the data from two thousand and eighteen, and they're up to like an eight-hundred thousand dollar profit off the rental operation.
And how do they make that profit?
By renting kayaks, and they run, they also run camps and other things, programs based around the Whitewater Park there.
And you're anticipating doing pretty much the same thing?
I think a similar model could be replicated, but it might be a smaller scale.
Thank you.
I think for purposes of that, when we head down that road, we'd look at the Enterprise Fund or Special Revenue Fund, because I don't think from an expenditure restraint standpoint, we could, the General Fund could take on that much in expenditures without going over that expenditure restraint piece of it. So if it can be an eighty percent self-sustaining type fund, we could look at the Special Revenue side of things and set it up that way.
So it's yet to be determined?
To be determined. Okay, Youth Center.
Can you just touch on the, what you foresee the benefits of the ActiveNet software program that you're looking at purchasing?
Well, ActiveNet is all we currently have, and that's, it's basically for recreation programming, it lets us do roster management, that type of things. But the software program that we're looking at would be more specialized for like field reservations, for athletic fields and diamonds. So right now, we just work out an Excel spreadsheet, it's really archaic. There's no like online field bookings or anything like that, everything has to come through our office in a phone call or in-person meeting. Also, the way the fields are set up now, we have a contract with the youth groups to use them, so we don't really have a good handle on actual hours of usage in the athletic fields and the ball diamonds. We know they're, they're getting used on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, but are they being used efficiently as far as from five to eight PM at night where there's still sunlight, or are they just being used from six to seven every night? So they'll, and hopefully, they're getting used efficiently, but this will also let us know that, but if they're not getting used efficiently, there is a hope that we can also get, get more use out of the fields that are currently in our parks. Over the last year, I've probably been contacted by six different youth sport organizations from outside the city that would like to use our fields, and my answer to them right now is that we're basically booked, because we can't double-book the fields based on our current policy or way we do reservations.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Want to touch on the?
We'll touch on the Youth Center, and then we'll go through, I think Dan has a staffing request out there too. So Youth Center, nothing significant, again, until we get down to the telephone, all landline and charter costs over there, so that, that number's been reduced to zero at this point in time. The outside services contract, this reduction of twenty-one thousand dollars, again, this was a change in accounting methodology. This relates to the Friends of the Stone Area Youth Center. Again, we would give them money, and then, no, they would give us money, turn, and then we'd turn around and pay it right back, so we just told them, we're not going to do this. I think this was setup originated to show that city kind of had some skin in the game that they were paying this, but we said, we can give you those reports, we can show you what we're, we're paying down there, and they were okay with that to eliminate this, so we just eliminated some kind of inflow and outflow here, so. Any questions on Youth Center?
Can you explain how the Youth Center Director is paid? It's through a grant or something from another organization?
Yeah, so, I mean, it's a hundred percent funded through the Friends, right? And then that's grant?
Yeah, the Friends of the Stone Area Youth Center funded position, and they, they submit for different grants throughout the community to pay for it.
And how much skin in the game do we have for that, that position?
Twenty-one, twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand, yeah.
And that's, that's also for the two assistant staff people as well.
And do you expect that to be the case in the future, too?
Yeah, and, and they're also committed to also paying the cost of living increase, so basically a two percent increase in the manager's position every year, and health insurance increases.
And does that affect the benefits?
Yeah, they're, they're covering the increase in benefits as well, as from what I've been taught, so.
I just, you know, just want to point out that this is a position that is subsidized heavily by another organization. I don't know if everybody knew that, so.
Regina?
Jamin, what is the rent expense? Is that because we don't actually own that building, and we're still paying rent to a foundation, or?
Yeah, yeah, we have a, we have a lease with Stone Trailers for the building, so the, the rent expense is basically the property taxes for the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Jamin?
Okay. And then Dan does have a request for a full-time Recreation Assistant as well.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thanks. I'm going to indulge for just a moment here. I happen to be on the Parks and Rec Committee, and I know that Dan's load is incredible, as is, I presume, actually, every employee of this city, so I just wanted to take a moment to say this, I don't think we'll fund this, I wish we could. And also, I've been on this council for about a year, and it never ceases to impress me how talented the people that work for the city are. and it never ceases to impress me how talented the people that work for the city are, the department heads, the employees, et cetera. We really have a wealth of talent, and it's very impressive. And I wish we could fund as much of this as we would like to, and I know we'd like to fund more. But thank you to all of you who are here tonight, and also all who might be watching on TV. But it's just never ceased to amaze me how talented these people are, the people at this table, the people in the audience there, and the employees of the city. So, I just wanted to take a moment to note that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dan, can you just explain what you foresee this recreation assistant doing and...
Sure. The main reason for this position is basically to do first point of contact for customers. If anybody knows our department, we're basically two people. Greg at the Youth Center, I don't really count him because he's down at the Youth Center managing that outside of City Hall. So, the two of us, we're professional positions. We're constantly in meetings. So, what ends up happening, quarter of the time, I end up being the first point of contact for customers coming in for recreation or park-type things. So, I'm talking like program registrations, park shelter reservations, things that are something at a really low level that anybody that has a knowledge base of what we actually have in the city and what we're doing on a day-to-day basis would be able to answer. And it takes me away from the higher-level tasks that I should be doing, like strategic management, you know, mentoring employees and managing them, things like that, you know, more parks planning-type of things and bigger projects. So, there are other things that, you know, I'm in five different committees and basically run those committees as far as the meetings go. And it takes a lot of time to do a lot of that stuff. And I'm constantly getting pulled in different directions from community organizations. Like today, I got scheduled a meeting with the Athletic Director. It's for a community-based project he's working on. And it's hard for me to be a community representative and also get a lot of the tasks done that I should be getting done. So, it's very tiring and hard on me. And I don't know. It's difficult.
So, I guess I would support if there's, we can figure out a way to at least figure out a strategic way to fund at least part of a position like this or combine two positions within the city that could be that front, you know, the first person that people meet. I don't know who that, you know. We have to figure out a creative way to get some of these positions filled, whether they're shared positions or something. I mean, we're really running our staff, break it. And, you know, we keep on building. We keep on saying we need more growth, but that more growth doesn't really seem to pay off with us being able to hire more personnel. And so, we just keep on adding more and more work onto all our staff, and we're not helping them anyway. So, we have to figure out a way to get our staff help. Otherwise, we're going to lose our good staff that we have, because there's other communities that have figured out a creative way to fund these positions. So, as we go through this budget, I really, you know, implore you guys to really start thinking creatively of how we can figure out a way to, you know, fund these positions, because I don't want to lose Dan. I don't think anybody in this city wants to lose Dan. But he's going to be burnt out soon if we don't get help. And that goes along with, you know, everybody else in this room, too. I mean, it's not just Dan. It's Brett and Pat Groom and Rodney. At least, we got him a little help earlier and the chief. So, we got to prioritize and try to figure out how to, you know, either cut budgets somewhere else and, you know, fund these positions. So, that's my spiel.
Go ahead, Phil.
And you have, in the past, tried to help somebody, some other staff at City Hall to be first point of contact person in it?
Yeah. We tried that. The Recreation Supervisor sat with a week with our City Hall Receptionist, and we created a step-by-step procedure manual, how to do some low-level tasks, and it didn't work out. So, we put a good effort into trying to make it work.
Sid, and then Jim.
Have you delegated responsibilities to the Youth Director?
There's, it's hard to delegate responsibility to add more to his plate. He's doing a lot, as it is, as far as, you know, this past year, he fundraised, I don't know, close to probably $75,000 to renovate the Youth Center. There's other things. So, it's...
You were mentioning, you were mentioning the issue of, you know, going to five different committees or six different committees and whether Greg could do some of that work.
I mean, I would...
Is he on any, is he doing any of those?
It's beyond that. It's a director-type level responsibility.
Is he going to, like those...
He goes to the Friends of the Stoughton Area Youth Center meetings.
And anything else?
And, I mean, I'm sure he goes, he goes to other, like, community organizational meetings when he's asked.
Right. But you're talking about being on a number of different committees?
Yeah. I have like things like Rivers and Trails Task Force and the Whitewater Park Strategic Committee meeting, Parks and Rock. And there's just no getting out of those.
Thank you.
I mean, this is a position that's funded in smaller communities than Stoughton. I mean, Jefferson has a position like this, and we do much more than they do. And I have much more responsibility as far as parkland and other things. So, it's not like really asked for something that, you know, is frivolous. This is a very much needed position.
Jim, go ahead.
Thank you. On top of the million other things, you write grants as well, don't you, Dan, quite often?
Yeah. We just received a $10,000 grant through the Volleying Foundation for a playground at North of Kitch Park. So, yeah, it's one of the things that takes, you know, I don't have time to spend as much on these types of things that I should be doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Anyone else? Kim?
All right. So, we'll work through Rodney's. So, the first page here is actually just kind of a roll-up of his three departments under the General Fund. So, Inspection, City Buildings, and Planning. We won't spend much time on this sheet. We'll go through the departments individually. But just to give you an idea of what all these departments look like rolled up together, I thought I'd throw, I thought I would throw it in there. So, the first one we'll go through is Inspection. The first big change is the wages. You see 11% increase or $7,800. Again, this is just due to a shift in allocation methodology. If we go up back to the roll-up page, if you look at the overall increase in wages, you can see it's only 3%. So, we're going to see some kind of ups and downs as we work through Rodney's different departments here. In Inspection, if you look at Employee Benefits, again, 13% or $1,300 increase, again, just due to a shift in the allocation methodology in terms of where we think the effort's going to go next year. Other than that, nothing major change within the Inspection Department. Any specific questions on Inspection? Okay. City Buildings. So, again, you can see wages. In this instance, it went down 15% or about $11,000. You see that consistently through Employee Benefits and the Health Insurance. Again, this is just due to a shift in the allocation methodology in terms of what departments we thought the work would actually be going to next year. Outside Services, you can see 10% increase or $1,500. This relates to the janitorial increases that we've seen under a new contract. Utilities for the Senior Center Annex, you see a slight reduction there. Again, this was just to put it more in line with historicals. Utilities and Maintenance for the food pantry, you can see up 155%, mainly due to the janitorial increases that we're seeing. Utilities at the McFarland State Bank property, MSB property, up $30,000. Again, we did not budget this in '19. So, this is the first year we kind of had an okay handle on this. I think this will be, we'll have a much better handle on this for the '21 budget, because we have not seen the last few months yet. Operating expenses up 30% or $3,000. Again, this was just to put it more in line with year-to-date and anticipated trends going forward. Operating expenses for the MSB property, $14,000 increase. Again, we did not budget these last year, and this just relates to the new building. And then repairs and maintenance for the MSB property of $5,000. Again, not budgeted in '19. Overall increase here, you can see is $45,000 to 24%. But again, this is mainly due to the acquisition of the McFarland State Bank Building. Overall, within his departments, we saw about a $38,000 increase just due to the MSB building. The majority of this is actually offset through the rental revenue coming in. So, just so we don't kind of panic about that.
Do you want to tell us what the rental revenue is?
Off the top of my head, I want to say about $25,000-ish.
I think it's between 25 and 30 total.
Yeah.
I'll look it up.
I'm just looking, I'm looking at this. It's three-quarters of the way down. It's always striking to me when you get a 155% increase. What is that with the janitorial increases to 100% or 25%?
Changes in the contract and services. And you'll see, we'll talk about janitorial services and potentially having a position take over some of that responsibility.
Okay. So, okay, I still don't understand, but...
Utilities, a contract for service.
Okay.
Clean and manage the spaces, that space that they deal with, and tear down the boxes, put away the boxes that they leave.
And why was that changed?
We lost the service.
Okay.
The previous provider discontinued service.
Oh, okay.
And we saw, we saw it pricing from several vendors. And at the same time, the public safety building, that building were changed.
And I would point out that it's not a lot of, it's not really a whole lot of money from $7,000 from $4,000, $250. But it's, you know, it's a significant increase. Okay.
Lisa?
So, the Depot, is that the Chamber building?
It is.
And they don't fund their own...
You're correct.
...building?
It's a city-owned building. They do not fund.
I'd like to talk about that. Is that, is that usual and customary in other cities?
I'm not really sure. That's been the arrangement here for years. And I know as part of the strategic plan at the Chamber, one of the things that they're looking at is, you know, where they want to be operating out of in the future. And I don't know if it includes that site or not yet. That hasn't been determined yet by the board.
I don't know if this is a forum, but I'm not crazy about that idea. I mean, quite honestly, I, and I could be mistaken, but I often hear, that's a city event. This is a Chamber event. So, I feel like there's sometimes a line in the sand with the Chamber. So, I'm not comfortable paying that. I mean, and I don't know if we...
They should be paying us, because we own the building.
Yeah. It's prime real estate, too.
They don't pay any rent. And they don't pay for any of their utilities.
So, I'd honestly like to knock that out. And I don't know if we need to give them a little bit more heads up, but for a point of discussion, that's a lot of money.
Got you. Thank you.
I'll certainly have that conversation with the board.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And I would agree with Lisa. I'm not enamored over that situation.
I agree as well.
Are there other organizations in town that pay us rent for buildings?
That was...
Would this be a new precedent? Are there other organizations in town in a similar situation?
Yeah. We charge rent for most of our buildings. I know even the school district pays us rent for use of the Youth Center, so...
So, this appears to be an exception, then?
You could call it, yeah, it's unique, yeah.
It's a longstanding tradition, and I think it stems back to when some revitalization work was done to the building. That was done in partnership with the city and with the Historical Society here in Stoughton. So, it's been kind of a long-term partnership. And the building also acts as a museum as well. And I think that was part of the arrangement. I'm not sure many, how many years back it goes, but I can certainly get more information.
Last question. This might not be the place to ask it, but is the Chamber, and I don't know enough about the Chamber, so I'm asking, are they in a position that they have fees and revenues that they could support a rental payment?
I think that's something that the mayor can have a discussion with them.
They do have fees. I mean, it's the fee base of who is part of the Chamber. So, not all businesses are part of the Chamber. Only the ones that decide to pay the fee to be part of the Chamber is my understanding.
Actually, I think this is a conversation that the mayor just needs to have with them. That's, we just need to...
I want to answer your question.
Yeah, exactly. Sid?
And I would suggest that if we make a major change, you know, in this, that we would invite, like, maybe Laura to come over and talk to us about it, too. So, I think that that would, that would be a secondary thing I would suggest to the mayor to have a discussion about that, but also to have a discussion about maybe coming to the City Council to present on this particular issue.
Yeah. They typically do come on an annual basis and kind of review the budget, which was just approved on Monday. So, I'll see if they have, if they want to get on the calendar and present to this group and answer some questions. And like I said, they just finished up with the strategic planning. That was also approved on Monday. And they're still working out the details as far as implementation of that plan.
Just a suggestion that she'd be invited, because I think we have some sentiment of, at least some of us, that we're concerned about that.
Sure.
Okay. Moving on to the Planning Department. Again, you can see a shift in wages of 12%. Benefits and Health Insurance. Well, benefits followed suit. Health Insurance, there was an actual change in election here in terms of how it's getting allocated. Overall, nothing else changed too significantly. $6,200 total change or approximately 3% at this point in time. So, again, just kind of rolling back up to the departments themselves, you can see an overall change of $61,000 or 11%. $38,000 of that relates to the McFarland State Bank Building at this point. So... Any specific questions on the budget information? Okay. And then Rodney does have a few staffing requests to go through as well.
So, the first one, first two are related to janitorial. What's being proposed is a one-and-a-half full-time equivalent position. So, a full-timer and a part-timer to handle the contractual janitorial services that we provide in the various city buildings. The responsiveness and the ability to manage the crew and the quality, I think, can be improved by having some stuff done in-house. You'll recognize on this spreadsheet that's shown on the screen here, there's a cost of about $82,000 to do both a full and a part-timer. And under contract, we have about, just under $63,000 under contract for janitorial services for the buildings that are included here. Certainly, we've had some quality issues, but we have experienced some significant increases in prices when we've sought outside contract service changes. Not in the amount of work that's being done, but the price has gone up. So, we're fearful of that change. In addition, we think that there's an opportunity to improve the quality. So, the net, the net cost would be about $20,000 to have a time-and-a-half position. One would ask, can one full-time person handle the scope of work? We've allocated what we believe the appropriate number of hours for each of the facilities, and it would equate to approximately 60 hours each week of janitorial services that we, that are provided through contract in our various facilities already. Certainly having the backup with a full and a part-time position, I think, would be beneficial to cover vacations, training, sickness, those types of things. So, there certainly seems to be an interest by some of the departments to ratchet up the quality and responsiveness of some of the areas. So, if we don't get this approved, we certainly would be looking at potentially an amendment to the contracts or new contracts with different vendors. But again, we're a little bit fearful of what those amounts will be based on our recent changes that had to be made.
Right. Before you go any further with that, I'm just curious. So, the total together would be about, like you said, about $82,000. The... So, the total together would be about, like you said, about $82,000. The custodial savings, then, by not using the contractual, is roughly 62, 62 and a half. So, you're roughly $20,000 difference there. Then on the page before, for city buildings, you've got the two janitorial increases there, which total roughly 23.5. So, is this a total wash?
Again, we're showing what it would actually cost. That is with the, with the increased prices already, so...
Okay, so, so it would be roughly a 20, 20,000 increase then?
Correct.
Okay.
To go for the outside services.
Okay, continue.
Or to bring it in-house, I'm sorry.
Continue.
The other position is one we've certainly heard suggested by some council members, code enforcement, minimum maintenance. Those type of activities, we handle somewhat on a complaint basis and then on a staff availability basis. This presents a part-time position for the code enforcement position. In addition to that, the administrative assistant that we currently have is being proposed to supplement the number of hours they have to help deal with the administrative part of that position. So, those two are, if you will, tied to one another. Without the code enforcement position, we're not looking to increase the administrative hours, but with the code enforcement position, we think it would be appropriate to increase the administrative hours. The last position that's being sought is related to landscape for building maintenance. You might recall, we've actually budgeted $60,000 in the 2020 budget for landscaping upgrades at this building, the senior center, not just upgrades, maintenance and management of this building, the new City Hall location and the senior center. This position is proposed or suggested to be a LTE position, not a full-time position, not a benefit-type position, but a limited-term employee that would help manage that process next year. One suggestion that was, was brought up is maybe capitalizing on this expenditure, utilizing some of the CIP funding to help offset this price or this cost of this position, because we think we can certainly leverage the amount of work that would be completed by having a person assist and/or do some of that activity at the same time. So, there might be an opportunity to, to fund this in a way that reduces the amount of operating impact and utilize some of the CIP dollars that are allocated already as part of the CIP budget. Any questions?
Can you explain that further, Rodney, how that CIP budget would...
Yeah, so, let's say we, let's say we've got a 60,000, well, we do have $60,000 planned for the capital budget next year. If we funded 20,000 of that for this position to help complete the work, we'd still have $40,000 left to help buy materials and offset that, that amount of work that would be completed at those buildings. Lisa?
And just for clarification, I missed this. This would, the code enforcement would not be a function or rolled in at all with the CSO, correct? Or has that been...
It very much could be. A lot of other agencies that have community service officers incorporate that into their job description. Pittsburgh being one of the closest ones that does that. They actually have two CSOs, and that part of their duties are code enforcement.
The admin assistant, that just goes along with the code enforcement?
Yeah. It's, it's the backdrop of the enforcement, dealing with the administration work.
Separate person that's already...
We have an assistant. It's adding hours to supplement the activity of the code officer.
I'm just, again, trying to think creatively, could that admin assistant, I don't know if that person sits at the front desk at City Hall, is that person also, if we increase their hours, help out with parking rent? I mean, is that a possibility? I'm just trying to be efficient with the people that we're hiring and if they could do multiple things, if that's a possibility.
Not necessarily to get into specific details about my current staff, but they may not have interest in taking on as many hours as that would present, because they have some interest in part-time status.
Okay.
And so, creating that position as a full-time probably would not accommodate, be able to be accommodated by my current assistant.
All right, thank you.
Now, I think you'll find that there's already quite a bit of support being done from the administrative assistants, particularly at the front desk. I mean, they answer the majority of the calls. They are providing support for several departments while they're there, including helping myself. So, I think that does already exist. And they do things in, with financing, they scan bills into the system, they work for Holly, they do quite a bit of work ongoing in her department, especially during election time as well. And we're getting maxed out on their hours as well. In fact, that's going to present a challenge for us during the elections next year, is that we typically try to utilize our part-time staff to support our elections, but we can only give them so many hours before we run over and have to pay benefits. So, we're trying to address that situation as well.
I appreciate that. I'm just trying to, how to utilize the staff that we have to, you know, as you always say, to make things more efficient and try to overlap things.
Well, that's good stuff.
Ben, you had something?
I was wondering if code enforcement would have any impact on revenue?
But issuing citations in the form of parking violations probably aren't the same when you look at zoning. There certainly are citations that can be issued, but I don't know that I can forecast that amount well at this point.
And I think the goal is more for the compliance than the revenue. We certainly don't want to make it, you know, unaffordable, if that's a word to live here. We just want to encourage people to... Yeah, we want to encourage people to take care of whatever issues they are and do it in a consistent manner. And that's where it really gets challenging right now, is it's mostly complaint-based. And if we were to try to be a little bit more proactive, I think what you would find is people would be contacting alders and suggesting that maybe they're being picked on when they're really not. So, I mean, those are some of the unintended consequences when you kind of go down that code enforcement road. And I'm sure you've heard some of that even on the parking enforcement.
Yeah. AJ, were you raising your hand?
No.
Okay. Chief, did you have something?
Yeah, I would echo what Rodney's saying, though. I mean, you, you really shouldn't be looking at them as revenue producers or revenue as the stream to fund these. Although I will say that it goes to quality of life issues, and I can piggyback with what Rodney's saying about code enforcement. That's also, I mean, we get plenty of these complaints ourselves that, you know, come to us and, and to the planning department at the same time. And it's kind of that broken window theory, you know, it having, you, you take care of the little things, they don't swell into big things that result in neighbor disputes that may end up in criminal court at some point. So, there, there's a lot of benefit to increasing that type of proactive approach to those, you know, issues that are relatively minor, but that can fester into something more serious.
And who knows? Do you have anything else on Rodney? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So, we are done with the general fund. So, we'll start working through the utilities, so we have stormwater and then utilities left here at this point in time. So, this first page is part of the stormwater budget here, and you can see we have some historical information working across 2014 through 18, and then obviously 19 and 20 budgeted at this point in time. As we work across this, I guess down, we have our operations budget, which is just kind of the O and M costs, wages, direct costs, things like that. Debt service for the stormwater utility, we are, we are funding and equipment replacement account throughout the years at the $21,300 level. We do have some other revenues that we budget in terms of interest income and things like that. And then we, we're attempting to build in a rate of return on the net plant balance. We kind of follow what the water and electric utilities are allowed to do under the Public Service Commission. The intent of this and building this in over the last two years and continuing to kind of raise this incrementally is to get to a point where we're not so dependent on debt from a stormwater utility standpoint. In terms of utilities, this is a pretty young utility. It's, it's fairly new, so we'll be heavily dependent on debt for a while, but we're trying to build to a point where we, we don't have to borrow every single year for capital infrastructure in the stormwater utility. So, that's why we're attempting to build in a rate of return to be able to fund some of these replacements as they come up. So, we have our total costs and then the actual revenue that we would need to recover this. So, for 2020, we're anticipating an annual cost per, is it equivalent residential unit?
Equivalent runoff unit.
Equivalent runoff unit, okay. Of $72.55 or $6.05 per month. That's an increase over the 2019 monthly rate of 546. And as we work our way over, you can see that's about 11% increase, but per ERU or equivalent runoff unit, it's about $7 per year increase.
And Rodney, can you just explain what a unit is?
An equivalent runoff unit in Stoughton actually equates to 31, or 3,105 square feet of impervious area on the average residential property. We did a, an exercise many years ago to get an, an average size of the impervious area of your wide range of single-family residential properties. Properties that are larger than that or that are not single-family are assigned the, an equivalent number of runoff units based on how, how big of area of impervious area is actually on their site. So, for example, if you've got a, a site that's 31,500, 31,050 square feet of impervious area, they'd get charged 10 times the base of one equivalent runoff unit. So, that's how it's been established, but it was done very scientifically, if you will, back in the early 2010s so that we could establish the rate, and that's how it's continued to operate. That's adjusted every time a property is added to the system based on the amount of impervious area of the site, if it's expanded, if it's, if it's changed in dynamics, those, those amounts are changed on the billing. Stoughton Utilities bills it on this, on our behalf, on their, through their rate-paying system, and I think that works quite well. Phone calls related to the stormwater utility are ultimately forwarded to me, and I work through those issues with each, each property owner that asks questions on them.
The overall goal with stormwaters is to get to a point where we can kind of start smoothing out these rates and just so, show slight increases as we move through the years. If you look at the second line item down, the new debt service, you can see how that's continuing to increase throughout the years. Just in five years or six years, we've gone from about $104,000 per year up to 254,000 per year. So, that's creating these spikes, which is why we try, we're trying to build in this rate of return methodology to get to a point where the stormwater utility can be a little more self-funding and fund more of the capital work through rates. It'll take a while to get there, because we're, you know, small steps, we're still building that incremental increase throughout the years. But the overall goal would be, if you look at the monthly rate here from 2013 on, you can see what the fluctuations have been. In 2013, it was 444 per month. It dropped down to 431 per month in '14 and then jumped back up to, yeah, it stayed at 430, and then it jumped back up the next year to 475. So, we've kind of seen these fluctuations within the stormwater rate. The overall goal would just to kind of start smoothing these increases out. It'll take a while to get there, but that would be the overall goal with the stormwater utility.
A few questions. One is, is it similar to what happens in other communities? And secondly, do developers look at this and compare communities when they're doing, when they're anticipating a development?
I can speak to, I can't speak for developers, but I think many of them would find this to be consistent with many communities in our area. The stormwater funding's opportunity for us was quite timely. It took it off the tax levy, and what it did is it actually captured properties that were non-taxable, good or bad. Schools, churches, and others that might have been heavier impactors on the stormwater system are now, in essence, it's more of a user charge. You can recognize some of your large, non-taxable entities have a fair amount of impervious area many times, and therefore, this is more a relationship, it's, you know, rational relationship to the use there. The question about the amount, I've never had a developer indicate a significant concern or otherwise. We do have a credit system that's available to be evaluated. There are a few facilities that have exercised that process, Stoughton Trailers being one, and we've evaluated that. And they, for example, are, are utilizing a credit and adjustment system that's called out in our ordinances.
Thank you, Rodney.
So, that's the proposed stormwater budget. There are some documents that follow that. We won't get into them in too much detail, but you can see, I was working through the methodology here. You know, we look at it from an income statement, a statement of cash flows. This is considered an enterprise-type fund, so it's similar to what the, the water and sewer and, and electric utilities are doing. And right now, we're, we're basically building in the rate of return that we spoke about of 2% at this point in time. I think last year, we started at, it was either 1 or 1.5%. So, we're just trying to raise that incrementally throughout the years. For perspective, water and electric are at 5% right now through the Public Service Commission. So, we're just trying to build that up as we go. And then the overall stormwater budget, line by line, is on the following pages. But again, there's no major significant swings outside of the debt service increases that we're seeing. So, any other questions on stormwater? The last one is the utilities. So, we'll work through that. We'll just kind of touch on some items in the memo. Work through this. Just stop me if you have any questions. This went to utilities committee on Monday and passed through there. So, now it is here at committee of the whole. Overall, major, major items within this budget, we did incorporate a market adjustment to the existing pay structure based on initially the annual MEW survey and working in the Springstead matrix that has gone through utilities, personnel, finance, and council at this point. So, we did budget for it that way. On the electric side of things, electric O and M, operation and maintenance costs, we're anticipating an inflation rate of 2% where, where applicable, where it made sense. Over the last five years, we've seen an average inflation rate of about 2% on the electric, or 2.04% on the electric side. So, 2% is reasonable for budgeting purposes. The electric pilot or payment in lieu of taxes, at this point in time, we're estimating a 0% increase in the mill rate. Doesn't necessarily mean that cost isn't going up, because as you add infrastructure, that cost does go up to the utilities. In turn, the revenue to the city goes up. But we have seen declining mill rates over the past few years, so we just left that at 0% increase to the mill rate at this point in time. Water O and M, we're estimating about a 3% inflation rate. Over the last five years, we've seen about 4% on the water side. We're not really anticipating that to continue. We made a few adjustments in terms of how we're allocating some of the labor costs down to utilities in terms of what folks are really actually working on at this point. The water pilot or payment in lieu of taxes, again, 0% increase to the mill rate. Overall, costs will go up just due to the addition of, of capital infrastructure for the water utility, but the mill rate, we left, we left flat. And then wastewater operation and maintenance, we're anticipating a 1.8% inflationary increase. Over the last five years, it's been about 1.81%. The proposed 2020 budget reflects a 3% increase in water rates with an estimated implementation date of April 1st, 2020. This results in about 75 cents to an average water user per month. On the wastewater side, we're anticipating a 6% increase in wastewater rates. We're working through that study right now. That is a study we conduct internally. We will probably give it to our engineering firm, Strand, for a final review on that. That will need to go through utilities committee and ultimately council before that gets approved. But we are anticipating a 1120 increase on this. That adjustment would result in about a $1, $1.33 per average user per month. That adjustment would result in about a one dollars, one dollar and thirty-three cents per average user per month. And the electric utility right now, we're, the budget reflects a two and a half proposed increase in electric rates with an estimated implementation date of July first, 2020. That may be wishful thinking at this point in time. W P P I, our wholesale power provider, actually does this study for us based on the information we provide them. They build out the entire cost of service, which is actually the design of the rates. They have it in their hands. I think they're going to present to the utilities committee in November. Then it's on to the Public Service Commission, which at this point is taking them roughly eight to nine months to get through a rate case at this point in time. Not ideal, but that's what we're dealing with, with the P S C right now at this point. This will equate to approximately two dollars and thirty, thirty-two cent increase to an average electric user's bill every month. As you can see, some increases going on in utility rates, but the overall monthly impact and annual impact is pretty minimal at this point. The water utility is anticipating a borrowing of one point nine million dollars to fund the nineteen and twenty capital improvements projects. That will actually, that's going to be sold on Tuesday, next Tuesday. So it'll be to council on Tuesday night. So any questions on the overall assumptions here at this point? Okay, this page here doesn't tell you a lot. It's just kind of a roll-up of the electric, water, and sewer utilities. Electric and water are regulated by the P S C, so you can see we have a rate of return there. Electric, we're anticipating about three point eight seven percent. Water, we're anticipating about three point six percent. Per our last rate reviews by the P S C, we're allowed five percent. So we're just slightly under that, which always kind of triggers that look at your rates. You know, always want to kind of, want to be as close to that five percent as you can to avoid any rate shock in the future. So this page is the electric utility, kind of works its way across right to left, historical sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. What we're estimating for nineteen and then proposed nineteen, proposed twenty. Overall, electric operating revenues, which the majority of which are sales, we're estimating about fifteen point six million dollars for proposed twenty twenty electric sales. That, that reflects about a seven point two percent increase. Again, we're anticipating a slight increase in consumption of about one point two eight percent, and then a July first implementation of about a two and a half percent increase. You may ask, why are we seeing a seven point two percent increase in revenues then? A lot of that is flow-through from our purchased power. So if you kind of work your way down to this line here that I'm hovering my mouse over, this power production expenses, you can see that's going up by about seven point nine percent. There is a pass-through in the, in the electric utility bill called a purchase power cost adjustment. So every month, we kind of catch up on those increases in purchase power costs. So as our costs go up to purchase power, the rates, the rates reflect that. Yes?
I don't know if I'm jumping ahead, but on the street lighting, it looks like it's going up, but I was thinking we were changing out to LED, which was going to be a cost savings, because we pay, the city pays the street lighting rate. So might that be less?
We've historically been seeing increases there, though, with some of the increased development and things like that. Yes?
So in the end, there's like an kind of income that's six hundred and eighteen dollars that's not accounted for. So where does that money go?
Well, that's why we build, first of all, that's not, that doesn't reflect true cash flow, because you do have depreciation and things like that. What's not showing on these lines are debt service and things like that. We look at the electric and water utilities from a regulatory standpoint, because that's kind of the best gauge we have in terms of rate of return. You build a rate of return into the, the design, so you have buckets of cash to continue to replace infrastructure as it comes due. So you don't have to borrow every single year to do that, similar to what the city does. The city generally budgets to a balanced budget, and then they have to go out and borrow all this money every single year to do S C I P. You see, the utilities don't really have to deal with that on an annual basis, because they have that rate of return cushion, that they build up these reserves and use that to fund infrastructure, new infrastructure and infrastructure replacement going forward.
Thank you.
We talk about this every year, but are we anticipating any large expenses like new wells or issues with the source, with our, with our wastewater treatment or anything that we have to be concerned about for either this year or next year or whatever?
Nothing major in the C I P. I think even for the next five years, really, from a water and wastewater standpoint in terms of wells, treatment, things like that, there's obviously what we call T and D, transmission and distribution work, which is the main work and service work on the water utility side, and then collecting system side on the sewer utility. But nothing major in terms of the actual treatment plant, which is obviously a big asset, and then wells or anything like that.
I'm thinking about, you know, if we expand in Kettle Park West, whether or not we're going to need a lot more infrastructure in terms of either wastewater or wells or whatever.
Well, nothing in terms of actual source of supply on the water side or even, even on the treatment. The treatment plant has enough capacity to take on a lot within this city in terms of growth. And I think, I don't even know what the stats are in terms of what we can pump every day versus what we're actually pumping, but I think there's a pretty big gap there.
And given the location of where that is and where our wastewater treatment plant is, is that a concern at all? Or, I mean, it's kind of way across town.
As far as I know, it's still going to be gravity-fed. Might have to go through a couple of existing lift stations, but...
Absolutely. If, if anything, actually, those developments are a benefit, because we've actually got a lot of capacity on wastewater and water. I think we're at forty percent, excuse me, about sixty percent capacity, so we've got forty percent, you know, pumpability, say, from our well standpoint. From a reservoir standpoint, we've actually got almost double the reservoir capacity that we presently need. Again, these are great things, and that's why we have built in these residencies or the redundancies. But from a growth standpoint, the wastewater treatment plant, as well as our wells and our reservoirs, we have plenty of capacity.
And I, I raised the question because I, I knew I was going to raise it when we, when we talked about whether or not we're going to, you know, go ahead with a, a phase two, whether or not we can handle that capacity of, I don't know how many homes we're talking about exactly, but, or how many, you know, places. You know, because if we have significant increase in the number of residences or businesses or whatever that we, I think have to be concerned about, whether or not we have capacity and whether that's going to increase our budget a lot with, with wastewater and water.
Definitely is a concern as far as where these developments occur. But in the end of the day, those developments are required actually from, not so much from a capacity, but say from a capacity from the piping system. So there's a development that was being looked at that, and there was to gravity-feed it, was an eight-inch pipe that probably was undersized. If they desire to move forward with that development, they would need to upsize that pipe to be able to have that gravity flow. So if there's a lift station that's needed for their development, they would need to fund that. Ultimately, maintenance would come to us for those, that infrastructure. But ultimately, for actually, you know, creating their development, they would need to fund those.
And would that be part of a TIF?
That's really, depends on how that's organized.
Tim, you had something?
Yeah, I would say, you know, the one thing I think we had in the C I P potentially is in the R D A area, is we get into future phases. There may be a need for a lift station there. But we're, you know, several years probably away from, you know, needing that for the first stage that's being proposed. I think we've determined we have enough capacity with what is currently there. But that would be something that would be on our radar in, in the redevelopment area.
Yeah, because we're talking about, we're talking about that area, and we're talking about, you know, potentially west side and, you know, you know, we're, we're anticipating potentially two fairly large developments.
Yeah, and I think, you know, in electrical, we're in really good shape with the new substation. Not only do we have enough to service it, but we also, with the recent outages, you've probably seen restoration has come back fairly quickly because of the redundancy that it provides for us, and maybe you can expand on that a little bit.
Absolutely. So as we get to lose a circuit, basically, that's now five percent or so of our customers are actually out at this point in time. With the four substations that we have, we've got great ability to backfeed our customers. So, you know, the infrastructure is there to be able to support additional development. And really, in many ways, the development helps the utility, particularly on the water and wastewater side, because we're continuing to see our revenues decline, and why we need to, some of the reason in which we need to raise rates ultimately is because conservation costs more. We encourage very much responsible resource use, but as customers continue to conserve the infrastructure that we need to be able to support them, that cost does not change. If anything, those costs, you know, continue to increase. So growth is very good for the water and wastewater, as well as the electric utility.
As long as we have capacity.
Absolutely.
Ms. Brett?
Jill, the, do you think the conservation efforts by the consumers in here would account for the ten percent drop in overall water and wastewater that are on the graphs in there? I mean, you know, it's a big drop from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, almost ten percent.
Pretty weather dependent.
So you're thinking, you're asking if you, if I...
Yeah, but it's a consistent trend, though.
And I think, you know, barring us to get a, you know, large industrial user, the residential homes that are being built these days are very energy-conscious. They're very, you know, they're conserving. They're actually much more efficient than the homes, you know, the, from any other era. So we don't see a lot of growth. As much as there's residential development, that's not a significant load for us to have a, you know, an industry that would come in that would be a big water user. We have the capacity and ability to serve them.
But was that why, I mean, like, the difference between seventeen and eighteen, was there something significant that happened? And I'm just looking at overall water volume and wastewater volume.
And that's a very good point. There was conservation, you know, kind of just general happening. There was also a big industry that, that reduced the amount of water, basically, that they were sending to us. Basically, somewhat usage as well as somewhat of the waste that they were sending to us.
Got it.
Any other comments, questions?
Okay, so that's the electric utility financials. Walking through some of these graphs. I know they're a little challenging to see on the screen. But again, I like pictures and I like graphs, because they kind of confirm what we're actually looking at in terms of numbers. So this works its way through. The first section here is the operation and maintenance costs for the electric utility, kind of the day-to-day direct costs. This one include pilot or depreciation or anything like this. This is truly just cash out-of-pocket type things. So the red line here indicates two thousand eleven through eighteen actuals, and then where the blue starts is basically where we're going for the next five years. So with nineteen, you can see a spike there. About every other year, the utility is incurring some pretty significant costs in tree trimming. So in nineteen, we're anticipating over a hundred thousand dollars in additional costs for those. These are all built into the C I P as well. Twenty twenty, you can see it drops back down, and then twenty-one, we have a big spike with a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in tree trimming, back down in twenty-two and twenty-three, falling on that trend line, and then twenty-four is another big spike with the tree trimming costs. So overall, we've seen an inflationary rate of about two point zero four percent over the last five years. The estimated inflation over the next five years, even though you do see these big spikes, actually equates to about two point one four percent. So even though it looks significant, it, it works its way out. The bottom left there is the capital expenditures. You can see a big spike in twenty seventeen and eighteen. That relates mainly to the west sub work that we did. Electric utility is staying pretty consistent over the next six years. No major, major projects. We're always working on the distribution system, but nothing significant like a new substation or anything over the next five, six years. The graph on the right is just the pilot. You can see slow and steady there, but, you know, obviously continuing to increase as we increase infrastructure within the city. Yes?
Can you explain how the pilot is calculated?
So the pilot is, it's basically your total infrastructure. So it's not net. It's the true historical cost of what you have, in, in this case, in the ground and above the ground for the electric utility. So it's all of our transmission and distribution. It's the west sub. It's everything. It's all, anything we would have capitalized on our balance sheet. At the end of the year, you look at what you actually have in construction in progress, even though you haven't capitalized on the balance sheet yet. You factor that in. You pay it on inventory that you have on hand. And then you, you take the overall mill rate for not just the city, but all of the taxing jurisdictions, and you calculate, you, you apply it to that mill rate, but the city gets it all. So it's almost, it's almost calculated like a TIF would be, and the city gets the entire amount of revenue. So none of it goes to the school district or county or state or anything. So I think it's right around a million dollars-ish between the two utilities.
Thank you.
Was it two thousand seventeen, tree trimming involved with the ash board too?
Not on the utility side. Utility side would be really cleaning up along where the lines are. They maybe took down some ash if they had an opportunity to, but... Okay, there's no questions on that one. We'll take a look at sales and kilowatt hours. Again, red is actual, blue is anticipated. You see, electric utilities kind of hard to budget sometimes. If you look back at the actual here, kind of got a big fat W sitting there, up and down, up and down. It's really a victim of the weather in terms of what happens throughout the year. Nineteen, in nineteen, you can see we're anticipating a slight drop. Through August, I think we're at about one point two one percent less than we were last year at this point in time. We're showing a slight increase in twenty, and then just kind of incremental increases for the next five years. So any questions on electric? This document, we won't spend much time on, but just kind of wanted to give you a heads up that, you know, utilities do look forward five years in terms of what we think are, the, the rate impacts are going to be, where we're going to be on a cash flow standpoint and things like that. Again, once you get out past one year, things materially change as time goes on. But again, we are looking forward five years to kind of make sure that we're staying on top of rate increases, really paying attention to that C I P and, and kind of creating realistic expectations with what the utilities can and can't do. The water utility, as you can see here, get to my notes. Okay, so again, we're anticipating a three percent increase effective April first. That's just through the Public Service Commission. It's called a simplified rate increase. Pretty easy. We just create a revenue requirement, show them what we need, and then they give us an inflationary increase right around three percent. So overall, you're seeing our total sales revenue anticipated to go up about two point seven percent. From nineteen, we're actually anticipating zero percent growth in consumption at this point in time. If we work our way down to the second section, which is the operating expenses, no major swings. Most of them are just inflationary. On the transmission and distribution, you see an increase of about thirteen point two percent. That relates mainly to a system study that's going to be done by our engineers in twenty twenty, and then some large meter testing that's going to be done as well. I think the system study will help drive our C I P going forward, so we may see some tweaks in there in the future. But the system study will be a part of that process. Next big number that jumps out is the admin and general costs, fourteen point eight percent. Utilities are planning on resurfacing the, the driveway over there, the parking lot. That's to the tune of about seventy-five thousand dollars, so the water utility will share a portion of that cost. Overall, we're anticipating a rate of return of about three point six percent. Again, five percent is allowed. Working our way through the graphs. Water's been fairly consistent from an O and M standpoint. Again, red represents actuals, blue is future. The black line going is the actual trend line there. No major swings. Again, in twenty, you can see they're getting a share of the admin building, parking lot, a thirty thousand dollar system study, and some large meter testing. Other than that, no major swings anticipated for the water utility from an operation and maintenance cost standpoint. The bottom left graph is the existing C I P at this point in time. Again, I think we'll continue to find two of this as the years go on. If you look at two thousand fourteen through eighteen actual, the utility is averaging about seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars per year in capital expenditures. As of right now, we're budgeted at about one point three million dollars per year. So we're, this is a hot topic of the utilities. We'll continue to monitor this. Obviously, we have some lead issues we want to address, so that's priority at this point in time. So I think the C I P will continue to be a work in progress as we work through the, the next couple of years. Pilot, same story, slow and steady, calculated the same way that the electric utility pilot would be. And then sales, Brett was kind of commenting on this earlier. Through August, we're down about one point, did I say one point five or one point six? This is one point eight, neither one of them. You see, it's been consistently dropping throughout the years. We're anticipating another drop in nineteen, not significant, right around that two percent range. For budgeting purposes, we do just level these off. The saving grace within this budget at this point in time is the fact that we did not take into account anything with the new senior housing and potentially the hotel when that comes online. So I, if anything, I would anticipate these, these sales stats will continue to increase over the next couple of years as those come online and we start seeing the effects of them, so. So there is some good news in the water, on the water side. Again, we do forecast out through twenty twenty-four. Not going to spend any time on this, but it's there for your reference if you want to see in, in terms of where we're heading and, and the potential impacts of it. Wastewater, so again, we are anticipating about a six percent increase effective... Wastewater, so again, we are anticipating about a 6% increase effective on 1.1 and 0% growth in terms of growth in consumption. So the total sales kind of follow along the lines of that 6% increase overall. Working our way down to the operating expenses, you see some big fluctuations there in the plant costs and then the admin and general piece. It's a pretty long list, we'll touch on that on the next page, we have them listed out, but we are anticipating an operating income of approximately $96,000 and then some below-line activity in terms of investment income and interest expense. The wastewater utility is not regulated by the Public Service Commission, so we don't look at that from a rate of return standpoint. The wastewater utility is really on a cash basis-type budgeting. So any questions on that piece of it? Okay, so here's the wastewater. You can see their O&M costs have kind of been up and down throughout the years. We do see a big spike in that 2020 budget year, but again, that relates mainly to a $40,000 facility study. They will get a share of the blacktop work done at the admin building, and they are doing the, the parking lot down at the treatment plant itself too for $75,000, and then they are doing a $30,000 system study in 2020 as well. So that's the big spike there, but again, following '21 through '24, we do kind of level back off and get sort of back on that trend line that we've been seeing. Capital expenditures, again, you see a big spike in 2014. That was for electrical work done at the treatment plant. Other than that, it's been fairly consistent. If we throw that one out, the utility's been averaging about $662,000 in capital expenditures per year. Over the next five years, we are anticipating about $1.4 million per year. So again, the CIP is, is something we'll, we'll keep our eye on and continue to work through in the, in the coming years and, and continue to monitor what's realistic from a CIP standpoint. Sales in gallons, kind of same picture as water, generally what happens in water happens in wastewater. So we've seen that consistent decrease through August. Right now, we're down 1 point, 1.6% at this point. So we budgeted that way for the remainder, estimated that for the remainder of '19 with a slight decrease, and then leveled that off. Again, with the senior housing and the, the hotel potentially coming online in 2020 as well, I anticipate we'll see these actually increase, increase slightly. So wastewater, again, we do have the five-year forecast if you want to look at it. Other than that, that's all we have for the utilities. Okay. So we have gone through everybody at this point. So the 24th would be to review any proposed changes and then finalize the budget for the November presentation. We'll continue to update the documents in the next week or so as information trickles in from the Department of Revenue in terms of expenditure restraint, if any, any other information comes through. Hopefully, we have the full assessed value by then too, so we have a good idea of what the mill rate's going to be. So I, unless there's any specific questions, I think we'll just kind of leave you with this, with the understanding that as of right now, we're looking at the 22,500 or so to play with. You have a staffing request in front of you, some of the specifics behind it within the departmental budget documents themselves, so take that home, kind of think about what you want to do. As leadership, we'll continue to have discussions internally, and we'll come back and see if we can get on the same page on the 24th.
So to summarize, then, we're going to, we've got roughly eight days to take this home, digest it, look at it. I would suggest that all of us, if we have any questions, if we present those questions to either Jamin or to the mayor, they can pursue those, and then, then there will be no surprises on the 24th. Nobody likes surprises. And then Regina, you had a question?
I was just, you know, I'm still thinking about staffing with respect to parking wrecks. Is there a way that, I mean, I know Dan, the fees for the different programs, is there a way that we could just increase them slightly to at least pay for like half of this position? Is that a possibility? Or, you know, I'm trying to figure out, you know, other revenue sources that we could try to get this position funded.
I imagine that's a possibility. I, I don't know how competitive we are or anything like that in terms of where we're at on the rates, but...
I wouldn't feel comfortable raising, you know, there are already basically market rates. I feel like our, we're charging to, like, hold on, I'm going to pitch here and then hold on.
Okay. So I was just thinking, even raising it, like a dollar or so might, with all the programs, you might get up to at least, you know, a halftime employee.
I caution us on the staffing part. We have to remember that, that, you know, as, as much as we'd like to, to increase the staff, you know, across the board if we could, we have to make sure that we understand that it needs to be sustainable, that from year to year, the mayor's going to be able to, to come up with the money to be able to budget for that, so. And I, I agree with what Regina is trying to say here, that we need to, to try and think outside the box, but we still have to have that sustainability.
Well, that's why if you were to increase the fees, you would have that sustainability.
Exactly. Yep, exactly. Sid?
I just think it's, it's in order for me and the rest of council to thank, especially Jamin and the rest of the city staff for, this is complicated and, and great job, I mean, in terms of presentation and especially the graphs and all that. I think that's been really helpful for me as a city council person to be able to go through it in this kind of way, and it takes some while, but it has, has a lot to do with how you were able to put a lot of time and effort in presenting this, so thank you.
Anything else?
Move to adjourn.
What I would have is that I would kind of agree with what, what Sid's saying, is that I think, well, this is my 12th budget now, so it, it has most certainly been the most thorough and most, I don't know how, I want to say it again, I don't want to say easiest, but it wasn't easy, none, none of it's easy, but I would say the most thorough budget that I've ever been through, the process has been really good, and I'm, I'm impressed. I thank the mayor and I thank Jamin and staff for all of that. So we're looking for one thing. Do we have a motion?
Got it, Ernie.
Did Sid motion to adjourn?
Yep.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Return.
Thank you. No money.